Welcome to this public forum with the candidates for the Mandan City Commission. I am Kim Nguyen with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are five candidates running for two open seats on the Mandan City Commission, and all five candidates have joined us here tonight. They are Shawna Labor, Dennis Rohr, Amber Larson, Ashley Kelch, and Bee Maloney. The audience here tonight, Thursday, May 10th, is invited to submit questions on the index cards provided, and viewers and listeners may phone or text questions for the candidates. The number to call is (667) 3237, or text LWV18527222333 with no more than 150 characters. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Mandan. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Mandan City Commission. Ms. Maloney, would you like to start?
I'm Bee Maloney. I've lived here in Mandan just about four years. I work as an advocate for Abusive Adult Resource Center, so I spend my days advocating for others and doing what I know is right. And I have a lot of concerns about how things are going in Mandan. A lot of my friends are concerned. After several months of people encouraging me, suggesting that I run, I decided to run for City Commission. I believe that our law enforcement and fire are not being supported adequately, and that is my number-one priority, is to change that.
Ms. Larson?
First off, my thanks to everyone who helped organize the event and all of you watching. As a Mandan business owner, I'm running to improve the quality of life in our city. My husband and I have built a successful business from the ground up in Mandan, including restoring and purchasing a historic building right in downtown Mandan. I've lived in Mandan for 11 years, and after a decade of volunteerism, I've learned I get the most satisfaction from helping in my own city. That is what brought me to serve on a volunteer basis on the Mandan Architecture Review Commission, to help start the Touch a Truck event, which is May 19th, and to be part of the group that's bringing little free libraries to Mandan, which we actually installed the first one of tonight, so woo-hoo. Plus, thanks to my marketing career, I have professional experience in engineering, public health, utilities, and media, which will make me a well-rounded city commissioner. I have a passion for giving stakeholders the opportunity to have their voices heard and will bring a fresh perspective to Mandan. Thank you.
Mr. Rohr?
Well, again, I thank those who put this together for allowing me the opportunity, and also appreciate the fact that we have four very interested candidates in this position because it's difficult sometimes to find candidates. I'm seeking a third term. I have been in Mandan for over 30 years. I come from a great background in terms of municipal government. I have served as a chief of police for 21 years here. I've been on many boards. I'm currently the chairman of the Sitom Committee, which has to do with public safety, with the county's planning and zoning network there. I've been active in MPO and other organizations. But the thing about it is, I have a great basic foundation in terms of the knowledge of city government. I've attended over 700 city commission meetings, maybe 1,000 planning meetings, so I have that background. You don't know where you're going if you don't know where you've been. I know where I've been. So I bring the history of Mandan to the future of Mandan. I know what needs to be retained that works, but also know the changes that are there. I do a lot of study. I keep up with things up to date in terms of especially public safety.
Thank you. Ms. Labor?
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters, and thank you to the audience and everyone watching for joining us tonight. I think it's really important to have these opportunities to share our ideas. I think that Mandan's a dynamic and amazing community. That's why I chose to be here, and that's why I choose to be a part of it by being your city commissioner, being on your planning and zoning commission, and continuing to serve. I'm uniquely qualified. I have a degree in economics. I'm very fiscally conscious and understand those processes, as well as having a background in mining, engineering, and utilities construction, just all kinds of really interesting things. And I will bring, I continue to bring those things to well-used, I would say, on this commission, where we need to have those skill sets. I do promote fiscal responsibility. I'm an advocate for enhanced police benefits packages, which we have done quite a bit on in the last three to four years to do that and address those issues with retention. With that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch?
Thank you, Kim, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. My name is Ashley Kelch, and I'm running for the Mandan City Commission because Mandan is my home. My husband and I recently purchased our first home together in Mandan, and we plan to solidify our roots here and raise a family here. I'm a person who believes that you need to be the change that you want to see in the world. I think that Mandan has made a lot of great progress in the past couple of years, and I would like to see that progress continue. I'm someone who has a great deal of experience in communications, and I believe that experience will lend well to this position. I will be able to listen, learn, deliberate, and then communicate my decisions to the community at an elevated level. I currently serve on the Morton Mandan Public Library Board, and I believe that experience, along with my experience in state government, has also prepared me well.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the questions developed by members of the League of Women Voters, our in-house audience, and viewers at home. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided. Viewers may submit questions tonight, Thursday, May 10th, by phone at (667) 3237, or by texting Candidates have not been given questions in advance, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. Please comply with our time restriction so we can get to as many questions as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you are down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, and stop. So our first question tonight will be directed to Amber Larson first. How can the city open northwest Mandan for continued commercial development?
Yeah, that is an excellent question. That's actually my neighborhood. We moved there from downtown Mandan for two years ago. And as I've knocked many, many doors in that neighborhood, I've had the discussion of the zoning up there come up quite a bit. There is a lot of heavy commercial mixed with single-family, and so part of it, I think, is very important for us to really look at making a stronger plan for what the identity of that area is. We have a really great elementary school with Red Trail Elementary School up there. And obviously, we have a lot of our city that doesn't have opportunity for commercial development. So I do agree that there's potential there with the land that the city already owns for us to take advantage of that corridor, capture more business on that side of the city, but I also think we need to plan better for all of the residential growth that has happened in that area and figure out how we zone better across that spread of development.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
The city of Mandan is elongated, and we have only certain areas and land areas where you can have certain types of development. And when we look at commercial and industrial, the area that you're referring to up there in the northwest part is probably the most, has the most potential for that. And so we have to look at how that can be laid out, and of course, being close to the interstate makes it very amenable to that. There's going to have to be some interchanges put in to allow more access, so we have to work with the state and allow that as well. So we have to look at the overall planning and look down the future as how development will go. And we need more industrial in some areas if we're going to continue to grow in some areas, and the commercial, of course, is as well needed, but you have to have the proper land use available for this, and sometimes that is difficult. So we work with owners of the land. We have to work with developers. We have to really plan long-term because these have long-term implications in how they're going to be utilized.
All right. Ms. Labor?
Thank you very much, Kim. I am a part of our commission where we have done a comprehensive plan for the city of Mandan, as well as a long-range transportation plan. In these planning documents, they've planned out five, 10, and 20, and 50 years in the future as far as where these types of developments should be in all of, not just northwest Mandan, but all of Mandan. Those are open to the public. We've expected and have requested and begged for public input, where do you want these things to go in our city? To the best of my ability, as a commissioner and as somebody who has diligently served on all of these planning events, because they're gigantic events that require RFPs, we go to people to try to put these together for us. And I think that it's not necessarily a scattered planning problem as much as when people own property, they don't necessarily want to either sell it or develop it the way our plan reflects. So we can say this is what we would like it to be, but we can't make it so.
Thank you. My next question, which will be first directed to Ashley Kelch, comes from our audience. Some candidates say they want to expand and fully fund police and fire departments along with a new station. How do you propose to pay for the $2 to $3 million price tag?
That's a very good question. I think a majority of people can agree that we want to support our law enforcement, and as we encourage development in our community, we also need to support the law enforcement more because you spread out more, there are more people, it just makes sense. However, being the only candidate, aside from the sitting commissioners, who sat in on the budget working session on May 1st, I have a better understanding of where the city is currently at with the status of the budget, and we just don't have the numbers to fully fund things like that at the moment. It's something that we'll have to develop over time, and I believe that the city has shown that they are dedicated to doing that. And as a city commissioner, I would also be dedicated to really trying to look at the numbers and figure out ways in which we can better support our police and fire departments.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney?
So, we have the money. We have it. It's there. How can we not support fire and police? Chief Ziegler, he needs at least another seven or eight officers. Chief Nardello, he needs to double the number of firefighters to adequately protect the city of Mandan. We're growing to the north. We don't have a station up there. If any of you live there, it's going to take about 13 minutes for a truck to get there if you have a fire. The stations we do have are not adequately staffed. This is why I'm running, because I'm not okay with how things have been going. The money is there. It's a matter of what we find important. My priority is the safety of my family and my children.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think we can all agree that it is important to fund our police and fire. As a matter of fact, the majority of the city's funds go to police and fire, the vast majority. So these are things that the city is already working on, but there's other essential services as well. We all need roads, we all need water, we all need waste services. We can't neglect those other things. So we need to work together creatively to look at how we can fund our needs and still serve all the other needs that we have as a city. So one of the things that I would propose is I think we need to look better at how we work collaboratively. You know, Bee mentioned the response times up in northwest Mandan for the fire department, but we also happen to have a really great rural fire station that I know the city tried to work with the county to partner on to use. So if we could get some of that to happen a little more, we could help solve these problems.
Thank you. Dennis Rohr, this next question will be first directed to you. What are your views on the rail yard project and its potential impact on Mandan?
Well, that in a town, when the grocery store left, left a vacancy there, it was kind of a hole at that particular area of town, and the building was sitting vacant for some time because we could not get another grocery store there, although a lot of people liked have seen that. And the city had the opportunity to purchase that and make it into something that could be good for the whole community. Now, it's got to remember too that the funds that were used to purchase that came out of the remedial funds, so we didn't get into the other budget areas. They were earmarked funds. So I think there's a lot of potential. We don't know what that's going to be yet. We've been doing research into that, whether it be moving library there or opening it up to commercial and other things. But we do need certain activities in Mandan. We lost a community center, so we need to have a place for that, but I cannot come out right now and say what that is going to be because, as a city, we're still looking at, why is the best potential use for the community?
Thank you. Ms. Labor?
Thank you. The rail yard project is different because the city purchased those buildings. They were up for sale for a long time. They were, they're getting dilapidated. It is getting to where you get blight in your city, and that attracts crime, and we really needed to figure out collectively, how do we rehab and refurbish if it can't be a grocery store, which was something that was very diligently tried. I do recognize that a dead downtown, if we do not continue to help our downtown be vibrant, is really not a great way to run a city. I don't want to be one of those cities where downtown is a horrible place to go. I want to keep our downtown vibrant. What I'd like to do with the rail yard project, I'm not interested in the city funding more. What I'd really like to see is a public-private partnership where the city owns the property and a private entity comes and develops the rest of it, and I think in that way we can have a successful project.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch?
Well, as I said before, I serve on the Morton Mandan Public Library Board, and I will speak to my experience with this project. It was brought to our attention earlier last year that there would be potential for the library to move into that building along with an event center. And being an active member of the community and being an advocate for the library, I thought this sounded like a great idea. After the library board doing our due diligence and hiring an architect to really help guide us through the process, initially, my decision was that it wasn't a good move for the library board. However, after doing further research, I voted that we should bring this project and the proposed idea to the city commission so that the public would be able to voice their opinion, so that the library board could voice their opinion, so we could make a decision as a community rather than just as the city and the library board.
Thank you. The next question comes from our audience, and it will first be directed to Bee Maloney. Do you think the sports complex will drive business to downtown, and how will you drive visitors to the downtown?
No, I don't think it's going to drive many visitors downtown. It's right next to the highway. People coming in from Bismarck, from other areas, unless they have another reason to go downtown, they're just going to hop right back on the highway and go back to where they came from. As far as driving more business downtown, I think encouraging more family-friendly events that'll bring in some outside money to supplement our sales tax. I'm not a fan of business incentives, which I'm sure a lot of you here don't like to hear, but I believe it's a very short-term solution to long-term problems.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
Yes, I've had the opportunity to actually talk with Edgar, who owns, you know, several eateries in downtown Mandan, and who's expressed some frustration that the sports complex, of course, is not benefiting downtown. Now, of course, we're a whole city. You know, I have a downtown business, but we're a whole city, and there are other things that have benefited from the sports complex, which is a good thing, like Arby's and now Bennigan's coming in. But I do think there is a challenge with where the site ultimately went, that it is landlocked, but it's too late to do something about that now. So while it doesn't benefit downtown, there's other benefits and other developments that it is benefiting. Now, as far as actually benefiting downtown, I disagree with Bee. There's been studies that show that incentives do drive business and do help businesses, not in a long-term way, but we've seen a lot of benefits from storefront improvement and other different types of incentives, and I think that is a great thing because our downtown has really started to revitalize in a great way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
Yes, I think the sports complex, as far as its correlation to downtown activity, is probably minimal, but it could be a real booster for that area of town up there as well. So there could be a lot of things forthcoming because of that being out there in this location. But speaking about incentives, if you were to invest $1,000 and receive $5,000 later, that would be a good investment. And the other things that city commission do to incentivize businesses results that way. We make an investment through maybe tax incentives or whatever it may be, and then those people purchase, they buy, they have properties, they have businesses, and they pay tax later on. And the return you get from those incentives far exceeds, you know, what happened originally in terms of the initial investment. So it's a good business model to have to promote businesses and do things that bring more money in later on. It's just good business, common sense.
All right. Thank you. The next question will be first directed to Shawna Labor. What ideas do you have for how the city can play a role in improving access to mental health providers?
I'm not certain that it is the role of the city to provide access for mental health providers. That is truly a function of the state and the county and social services. I think the best we can do as a city, I mean, we do have two mills that go to transportation to make sure that people have public transportation to get to where they need to go. We can coordinate and help if there's some way that the city can facilitate needs, but I don't know, we don't have a social services budget. We don't have people on staff who can really adequately address the needs because it's a serious need. I'm not, I'm not going to discount the need. I just don't have the resources in the city of Mandan to adequately address it, but we would be very willing to work collaboratively if there's something that we can do that has low or no cost to ensure that people are getting the services they need.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch?
Thank you, Kim. I would actually say that I agree quite a bit with Commissioner Labor on this subject. I don't believe that it's the city's role to necessarily fund services like these. However, I believe that collaboration is very important, and it's something that I've made mention of a lot throughout the campaign process, and I think this would be a good opportunity to collaborate with our state legislators, especially the ones representing our districts. It's important that we not only work with them when the community needs services like this or needs dollars to fund services like these, but it's also important to go to them and talk about our successes and talk about what we are doing because at that point, they know what we're working with and that they know what they can do to assist us in these situations.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney?
Well, and I have to agree with them both. I think it's very important to maintain the, for law enforcement to maintain the wonderful relationships that they have with nonprofits, such as the one that I work for, encourage an awareness of mental health issues, for making referrals to these nonprofits, to these other organizations. It's not something that we should be paying for, but we can encourage an understanding of some of the issues that come along with mental health.
Thank you. This next question comes from our audience, well, actually, it's a text from our audience, and it will first be directed to Amber Larson. What are your views on crime in Mandan versus the national average, and what solutions do you propose to combat crime?
Well, thank you for asking that question. I mean, I think, obviously, as we've said, we all agree that police retention is vitally important to our public safety. We need to support our police force, and I'm really glad to see that the full family benefits were passed most recently, so we're moving in the right direction. Now, specifically on crime, I did look up the North Dakota Attorney General report on our crime reports, and in 2016, we did experience sharp increases in drug and burglary cases. However, that was the same year we experienced the Dakota Access protests, which can easily be correlated to some of that increase. And yet, at the same time, in 2016, we saw decreases in robbery and theft, which I think is really a testament to our community and to our police force for the work that they've been doing while short-staffed to keep our great community safe.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
You're asking somebody who has, you know, 45 years of law enforcement experience, past president of chiefs organizations, has the post board, I have a lot, and I was a fireman before, I was a policeman, by the way, but there's a lot involved here. I don't have, I have 15 minutes to tell you this in one minute, but let me tell you that when it comes to adding more police officers and any things, you've got to look at it. And when you look at crime, there are many dynamics out there that affect crime that are not under control of police. There's cultural issues. It's how our kids are brought up with, to teach them values. It's what, you know, goes on in many underlying areas of the culture itself, the entertainment industry. We have a good police department here. I was chief here for 21 years. Yeah, we can use former police officers, but just adding police officers does not solve the problem of crime. There's a lot more involved, and like I said, I don't have the time to talk about that. Unfortunately, I'd like to go on, but there's a lot involved here, believe me. I'm an expert on it. I know I am.
Thank you.
Email Dennis. Okay, I just want to take a moment to again invite our in-house audience to submit questions using the index cards provided, and viewers may call (667) 3237, or text LWV18527222333 during our forum tonight, Thursday, May 10th. Our next question, which will be first directed to Shawna Labor, will go, it is, do you support the current tax exemption for new residential property construction? Why or why not?
Why? Thank you for asking me that. I believe I have been the most vocal on this particular exemption. I have a very difficult time with this exemption because it's new homes, which are generally encouraging urban sprawl, and the median home price of a new home construction is $360,000. I'm not sure that a $360,000 price tag on a home, if you can afford that mortgage, perhaps you don't need help with your tax payment. And I would like to utilize those kinds of incentive monies, if they're still available, into redevelopment of our actual 600-plus properties that are within our city limits rather than always having urban sprawl and moving out. That's what I want to encourage. However, I did vote, and we are sunsetting that exemption, and it'll be complete in 2020.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch?
I would have to say I'm in agreement with Commissioner Labor again on this, and I was happy to see that the commission had voted to sunset this exemption. I, as an owner of an older home in an already-established neighborhood, I think it's very important, if we're going to, as a community, offer incentives for new home builders, we should also be offering incentives to revitalize the neighborhoods that we do have. We have roads established there. We have sewer. We have water. We have all of those resources that we wouldn't need to be inputting into the communities if we were to sprawl more outward. I think this falls in line quite a bit with Governor Burgum and what he is planning for the state, and I believe that that would only lend a good hand and a good start to the community if we were able to find resources and the ways that we could maybe implement that into our community.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney?
Well, once again, I have to agree with those two. How is it fair to those of us that have been here for, whether it's five years, 50 years, that newcomers are getting these tremendous exemptions, these tax breaks? That's money that we need to support our infrastructure. As Ashley said, if they can afford a $300,000 home, do they really need that incentive to move to our area? That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Larson? Ms. Larson.
Oh, same question?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I'm in agreement. You know, I lived for nine years in a downtown home, 100-year-old home, in an established home. I also have lived for two years in a new development that did qualify for the tax exemption. And in my personal experience, I found that it wasn't really promoted. Now, I wasn't going to move out of Mandan, let's be serious. I love this town, but in my experience, it was, here's your keys, here's your paperwork for an exemption. Not to say that's the case for everyone, I've talked to other people where it has been a good investment, but I think if we're going to use this, it needs to be promoted sooner for the builders, it needs to be an incentive for people to go here, and I'm not seeing any proof that that is the case, so I don't see any reason at this point why it should continue.
All right. Thank you. The next question comes from our audience and will first be directed to Dennis Rohr. Many streets are in poor condition. What should be done to repair or replace, and how would you pay for it?
Infrastructure is, of course, is a national issue. We have many places within the United States where bridges and streets are becoming problematic, and there's a big cost involved in this. For the older parts of town, you take the areas down Second and Third Street and the older part of town, there's some other areas down south, too. The areas under the streets, sewer and water are in bad shape, and to go in, they really need to be replaced, and the streets need to be replaced, but those people cannot afford a special assessment to do that. So we have to look at that. How are we going to pay for that? Do we do, you know, citywide to pay for that? You know, we have to really look how that's going to be done, and to do the streets, you know, we have a street project, you have to come up with an assessment district, but there's other alternatives, too, sometimes, that are being talked about, whether it be what they call a user tax on streets. The bottom line is, it's still going to require so much money. Some of it can come from grants or subsidies from the federal government if it's on arterial streets and highways, but if it's not, then it lies to the city to do this. Very expensive, but we have to find, you know, funding source that's amenable to the people that live there.
Thank you. Ms. Labor.
Thank you. Repairing and replacing a road, two different things. Repairing, milling overlay, generally not the worst cost. If you, if we just, if we can get away with a milling overlay, you better believe it, we're going to do it. And if it's going to bleed another five or six years out of that road, we try to do the best for the homeowners because expensing that to each of the owners is very cumbersome, and it's always hard for everyone to have an increase in their house payment. So repairing, we try to do as best we can. When it comes to replacing, we try to do the synergies where we're doing water, sewer, road, all at the same time so that you're only busting up the road once, and it's good to go for hopefully another 15 years. So we do try to be strategic. Unfortunately, unless it's an arterial road, like Commissioner Rohr said, there is limited amount of money other than coming from us as taxpayers. So there is a certain amount of our sales tax that's used to, that can be used for some of these projects, which has been in the past. Other than that, it has to be from the citizens themselves that are benefiting.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch.
It's been my experience and my understanding with the city that the city has been working to utilize grant programs that are offered to take care of some of these main arterial projects. Main Street, for example, is one of them, and I think that's very important and a good use of time and resources to try and utilize those types of grants and funding. I would agree with both Commissioners Rohr and Labor that it, that it's really a give and take between the city and the community members, and you really can't get around that. The community members have to continue to make an investment in their city, in their hometown, and the city also has to match that investment.
Thank you. This next question will first be directed to Bee Maloney. Mandan offers a retail and restaurant incentive program for new and expanding businesses. How would you gauge the effectiveness of the program?
I'd gauge the effectiveness by how long those businesses stay in business and how long it takes to recoup those incentives. There's a particular business in town, I'm not going to name any names, I don't want to pick on anybody. It was a business that was opened in one part of Mandan, received incentives, 12 months later turned around, moved to another part of Mandan, and applied for and received additional incentives. This particular business, the estimated revenue was a whopping $2,000 a month. How long is it going to take before the revenue, the taxes that come in from that business to actually start coming back into the city?
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
I'm not familiar with the instance that Bee's talking about. So in general, I agree that, I do think that the restaurant and retail incentives are working well. I think that, again, it's shown that when we use incentive in a smart way, we get our return on investment. So I think it's really done a great job in a lot of ways in Mandan. We've seen a lot, a lot of restaurant growth, and that has been excellent for the city. And since I didn't get a chance to speak to one of the previous questions, I'm going to use some of my time to get back to that because it's been a particular issue for me was the downtown rail yard. And I do want to go back to the question on the use of that space because it was a thing that actually spurred me to think I need to step up and run more. I actually was pushing very, very actively for a cost-benefit analysis of moving the library across the street way back in January. As a matter of fact, I was sending emails to the city commissioners, and I think it's very important that the city and the business owners get to weigh in on that issue.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rohr.
Are we back to the restaurant questions?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. You know, we've heard, I've heard many times about, you know, the lack of facilities or restaurant facilities here in Mandan, and a lot of people go to Bismarck and eat, and we've been able to bring some good restaurants and eating facilities to Mandan, so if the, I presume that the incentives are a big part of that. You know, some things you don't know for sure because there may be other dynamics that affect it. But again, too, you know, there are also competitive issues, and you, when you get so many of them, you know, when they're competing and you're not able to maintain the customer volume that you need to have, then you look at that, but it looks right now. Most people, they say, eat out more than they do cook at home, so there's a big demand for eating out, and so there's a good potential there for the future. So I would hope that, you know, that the restaurant business continues to thrive and, you know, this, we, as a city, need to look at, you know, helping, but we cannot be investors in private business either. I don't want to become that part of government that we invest taxpayers' money in private business.
All right. Thank you. This next question will be first directed to Shawna Labor. As cities vie for limited federal and state resources, what do you suggest the city do to balance its budget?
Well, thank you, Kim. I think that the best we can do is we have to leverage our senators and really touch base with our representatives at the state level, and there are methods and mechanisms for hub city funding for other types of state aid that doesn't necessarily have to be an exact percentage. We do advocate for those, and I think we do it very, very effectively, but it is always difficult to balance our budgets and balance the state budget. But I think that with oil revenues coming back up the way they are, oil prices are going up, woo-hoo for us. So I think that it really turns into a situation where ebbs and flows are normal, cycles are normal. We just have to live through the cycle, and that's where we're at, and we will get through.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch.
Thank you, Kim. Obviously, we need to work with our state legislators on budgeting. I think that's very important, but along with collaborating with those individuals, I think the City Commission also needs to be collaborating closely with the park board and the school board as well. I think that, from what I've seen and what I've experienced, there is a good, a strong working relationship there, but I think that we need to make sure that we're not recreating services and duplicating services, and I think that if we work together with those entities that impact our community so much, there may be some wiggle room within the budget that we didn't realize was there.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney.
I think we need to look closer to home and not rely so much on the outside funds. We need to first focus on what we're spending our money on here and stop some of the wasteful spending, some of the pet projects that we're sinking money into. Look at our, look at the money that we already have and see how much we can utilize that versus having to rely on the outside sources.
All right. Thank you. This next question will first be directed to Amber Larson. What infrastructure would be needed to support growth on the strip?
Yeah, there's a whole study that's been done on the strip and the need for the strip. You know, it's a complicated thing, of course. We just all talked about the limited amount of funding coming from federal and coming from state, and that is a North Dakota DOT project, North Dakota DOT corridor. So there would be a lot of really great things, like buried utilities, for example, could be a great enhancement. We're short on sidewalk and walkability on the strip, so that's also a challenge, not just for the businesses that are there, which is very important, but for the general public from a safety standpoint. So those are infrastructure needs we have in place. Now, the challenge becomes when that lines up with the North Dakota DOT budget that we can make it a priority because it is, it's a big, it's a big price tag.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr.
Actually, with the strip here, the highway project was supposed to have been started just, you know, a couple of years ago, and this never got off the floor, it keeps being pushed off, and we're kind of at the mercy of the state and the federal funding in terms of their priorities. If they don't place Memorial Highway on a priority list as a project starting at a certain time and going on, then we simply can't do it. The cost has really escalated in millions of dollars. I think our current estimate could be $27 million. The strip itself is a very important link between us and Bismarck and a lot of traffic and a lot of places for businesses out there, but the ditches, the lines, the telephone lines and stuff like that are unsightly. Access needs to be better dealt with. It definitely needs something in the near future to make that area more amenable to the city of Mandan. But let's say it is $25 million, and let's say we had to pay 10%, that is still a big hunk of change that we'd have to come up with.
Thank you. Ms. Labor.
Thank you, Kim. I would like to delay this as long as possible, for as long as possible, and I'd like to continue to delay it for as long as possible because right now, it is a state highway, and the state plows it, and the state has to take care of it. As soon as they do this whole reconstruct, it will be up to the city. We do not have the public works staff, nor do we have the public works facility, the type of blade and everything that it will take to clear that. We will have to, not only do we pay our extra little tidbit to pay for the road, but then we need to buy machinery and we need to buy people to fix that road. The other 30 seconds, I'd like to say, our Mandan City Mill levy for the general fund of 48.35 mills brought in $4.2 million. Our expenditures for police and fire were $5.2 million. So I don't know where the pet funding is to find locally. However, I would like to say that we really, really rely on state aid, or we can't do it. Your tax would be astronomical if we had to pay this alone.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Kelch, this next question will first be directed toward you. What do you believe is the best way to provide property tax relief?
Well, that's a good question, and it's something that has really, in all of my discussions, I would say for the most part, all of my discussions with community members, that's something that has come up. And after seeing how the city approaches working with property tax, I don't know that I could step up and say that I could have a radical change that would improve property taxes and make them lower for everyone. I think the city is doing an incredible job of really being responsible with the funds that we are bringing in with the taxes that are being put on to our community members. I would carry on that due diligence, and I would like to see that continue, and maybe the process just seems to be more transparent so that our community members do see the work that is being done to keep property taxes lower.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney.
So a portion of our current sales tax, it helps us with our property taxes, right? Well, 0.75% is going towards the Star and Complex, $22 million project. They went under budget $800,000. What happened to that $800,000? Did it come back to us? Was it reduced? No, they decided to build more locker rooms. That's $800,000 that could have reduced some of our property tax. Spread out, wouldn't be a lot, but it's things like that that I'm concerned with. There's just not, not a lot of responsible spending going on.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, obviously, property tax has been a key issue for Mandan. We went from one of the highest property tax levels in the state to mid-levels. So that's a responsible thing that's been moving in the right direction for the city. You know, when we look at property taxes, it's a hard and complicated thing, and I don't know if it's realistic to say a property tax reduction. I mean, most of us realistically, as homeowners, are hoping for property tax, you know, maintaining the level. And I think that's where we have to collaboratively work together to realize, there's city, there's county, the vast majority is schools, and then there's parks coming into play and all in that same property tax. And as a matter of fact, the city of Mandan takes less than Morton County when it comes to property tax statement. So I do think it's important. Personally, for me, I think that we need to look individually at ourselves to say, where are we spending our tax dollars? Are we spending it outside the community? Are we keeping what I estimate to be a half a million dollars we spent outside the city, back in our city, to help us with these things?
Thank you. Dennis Rohr, this next question will be first directed to you. While the governor is set on reinventing state government, do you see opportunities to reinvent local government in Mandan? If so, how?
Again, you know, what do we want to reinvent? What do we want to change that is going to be more efficient, more proficient for the citizens in terms of how city government operates? We have, you know, we have the system, we have five commissioners, we have a, the working relationship, where we have portfolios, we have department heads, and we make decisions based upon information provided by department heads, and then we're subject to many other things, such as federal funding, state funding, state regulations, federal regulations, and so all those things come into that. But how to come out with a bumper sticker, reinventing government, you know, I don't like this kind of bumper stickers because they just say a lot and don't do nothing quite often. So they're just a bumper sticker, and they don't get into the foundation and depth of what really needs to be looked at. So your question about that, it's a bumper sticker question, and I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Labor.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Kim. I think that the way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time, so my method of the bumper sticker of reinventing government is actually just every decision I make, I'm deciding, is it efficient? Are we doing the right thing? Are we really strategizing this tax or this benefit or the policy or the procedure? Are we being the best that we can be with every decision and everything that we have to look at? You can't reinvent government in one fell swoop lest you just go ahead and burn the Constitution, start all over, see what happens. Outside of that, I think we really need to just be methodical, and that's my version of reinventing government, is one decision at a time.
Thank you. Ms. Kelch.
Thank you, Kim. I agree again with both Commissioners Rohr and Labor. I think there's always opportunity to assess the work that you're doing and to make sure that the decisions you're making on a day-to-day basis are falling in line with what your community members are telling you as well. The transparency just keeps coming back again and again. You have to have those lines of communication open. To simply say that you're going to reinvent government for the sake of reinvention is just not something that is feasible, and it's not something that is a smart decision either, especially on a local government level, especially in a smaller community like ours.
All right. Thank you. This next question will first be directed to Bee Maloney. Mandan's downtown Renaissance Zone will sunset in 2020 and will be eligible for a five-year extension. What impact has the Renaissance Zone had on Mandan, and should it be extended?
No, it shouldn't be extended. I've made pretty clear how I feel about some of these incentives. I don't believe that we should be spending that money on, you know, the new incentives. I don't believe that we should be spending that money on, you know, the new businesses. We've got, Bismarck has different buildings that have been playing out the Renaissance Zone for, what is it, 25, 30 years? And that's money that's not coming back into our community. So no, I'm opposed to the Renaissance Zone extension.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Larson?
So again, you know, I've been really thrilled to see a lot of the redevelopment that's happening with our downtown. I've had the opportunity to go to Governor Burgum's Downtown Summit, and I think it's really compelling to see the value per square foot you get when you look at a downtown area, and you compare the cost of infrastructure, and you compare the property and the value we're getting off those properties in those dense spaces. There's a lot there. So when we start having a Renaissance Zone, and we start having great businesses like Brea coming in and start selling things and start getting us that sales tax, it is a win from an infrastructure standpoint. It's a win from a sales tax standpoint, and I think that's a great thing. So I'd really like us to look at what the cost was that we actually put into that, and I have a feeling that we'd really easily see we got the benefit back out of it, and therefore, it would be worth continuing.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rohr?
All programs have lifespan. They only go so long, and then they have to be looked at. If the Renaissance program is doing really good, and is providing what the community wants, and providing what the commissioners are looking at, then perhaps it should go on. But I would say we have to reevaluate, and to say, is the Renaissance program doing what we originally wanted to do, and is it continuing to do that or better? So whether it goes on or not depends on, in looking at it, when you can close to that time, and making that evaluation. Like I said, you just don't continue a program simply because it exists. There has to be a reason for existing, and you can follow tradition or something, and presume that because it works now, it works later.
Thank you. And candidates, thank you for being here tonight. You will now have one minute to provide a closing statement, and we will start with Shawna Labor.
Excellent. (Laughter) Thank you. Thank you again for hosting this event. I really appreciate what the League of Women Voters has done for us. I hope that I've given you a sense of my character, who I am, that I want to continue to serve for another four years. I'd really appreciate having that opportunity. I approach government with honesty, dedication, and hard work. I have proven positive leadership in our community. And I know there's two top priorities I'd really like to work on. There's infrastructure planning and funding, specifically for a lot of water projects that we have in our community that are really going to have a huge impact on us, and responsible fiscal planning to meet our increased needs for emergency services and public works. These issues affect our entire community in so many ways, and I'm prepared to use the experience I've gotten in the last four years to continue to serve the citizens of Mandan in the next four. It's been a great honor, and I'm asking for your vote to continue to serve the city of Mandan.
Thank you. Ashley Kelsch?
Thank you. I would like to echo the sentiment of thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening, and to everyone who came to support all the candidates, and to those at home watching or live streaming. Forgive me, but I'm going to begin with a quote, and it comes from Teddy Roosevelt, and he said, "The greatest gift life has to offer is the opportunity to work hard at work worth doing." This sentiment really echoes to me, and it really rings strong, because I'm someone who believes in hard work. I know that hard work is how you get stuff done. Since deciding to run as a candidate, I've attended every city commission meeting. I've met with every city commissioner. I've met with city leadership, and I wanted to understand what it takes to run a city. I have the experience of learning what it takes to run the state, but to run the city is a different animal. And I hope that you'll see from what I've said this evening, and from the work that I'm doing outside of my campaign, that I have what it takes to get stuff done. So please, I urge you to vote for me, Ashley Kelsch, on June 12.
Thank you. Bee Maloney?
I'd like to thank all of you who are attending tonight, and everybody who's watching and listening on the radio, as well as the League of Women Voters for hosting this. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? I am running to be the squeaky wheel for our emergency services. I can't believe, again, I can't believe the lack of support that they have been getting. So if you feel the same way, if the safety of your family and friends in Mandan is actually your priority, then I encourage you to vote for me, June 12. Thank you.
Amber Larson?
Thank you, Kim. You know, there are three key areas, I think, are really important for me to focus on, and they're as simple as the ABCs, with A being attracting businesses, amenities, and community members to our great city. B, being budgeting more strategically, looking at long-term needs for our city, as I mentioned, including a cost-benefit analysis of the investment in the rail yard. I feel uniquely qualified to be able to do this, because I've had to manage personal funds for a business and see how a bad investment affects you over the long term. And then the C being communicating. I haven't got to speak about this tonight, but I am extremely passionate about letting community members get the opportunity to have their voices heard, which is why I've held a coffee with a candidate every month since I've announced, and why I want to give more people the opportunity to not get in front of the cameras, but get a chance to connect with our voted officials. I appreciate the support I've gotten, and I would appreciate your support to continue that with a vote for Amber Larson on June 12.
Thank you. And Dennis Rohr?
Well, the city's economic future and fiscal responsibilities are directly linked, and there's a tie between budget applications and what goes on with us tomorrow, and keeping debt to reasonable limits and avoiding deficits is one of the steps I want to look at. But I want to close by having some rules here that I gave to my officers, that I gave to the training academy, that I think that really applies to city commissioners as well. Citizens do not appreciate being chastised or talked down to. Citizens do not want their complaints treated as nuisance. Their complaints should be important to us, because it's important to them. Citizens do not want excuses why the job cannot be done. They don't want to hear specific city ordinances. Their concern is what will the city do, and what options do they have? Citizens do not want the runaround. They do not want to be left wondering what can be done. Citizens do want friendly attitudes, that they are special, and an honest effort will be made to deal with their concerns. And they want an apology if a mistake is made. And most citizens do not expect the impossible, but they do expect reasonable efforts and some solutions.
Thanks again. I wish to thank Dakota Media Access and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and the issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access, Cable Channel 2 and 602 HD, and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading to the June 12 election. Before we close this candidate forum, we remind you that you will need a form of identification to vote in North Dakota. You can find identification requirements and additional voting information on the websites or at the offices of your county auditor and the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you, and good night.[1762.82][1762.82](Applause)